All right.
Good evening. I'm calling the annual organization meeting of the Rhinebeck Board of Education to order at 7:08 PM. I'm going to introduce the newly elected board members Jacqueline Savalion and Megan Barbera.
On video.
Elected to the three-year terms effective July 1st, 2020. The Otho office is administered to the newly seated members. So, for those of you newly elected. Megan, did you want to do it first? Megan, would you like to read the... Eagle Book Office. Megan?
Yes, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Sorry, can you read the Otho office, the one I sent in email?
I can read it from email.
Yep.
"I, Megan Barbera, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of..."
What is the line?
Trustee.
Board trustee.
As the Rhinebeck Board trustee according to the best of my ability."
Thank you. We'll get to this later. Okay, Jacqueline.
"I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board trustee according to the best of my ability."
Okay, and since you're here, we'll have your sign. Okay, I call for nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2020-2021 school year. Nomination? So, Mark? You're nominating yourself? Okay.
I nominate Diane Sorensen as president.
Second. Okay, so Mark nominated Diane and Jacqueline second.
Nomination.
Any other nominations? So, what we now want to say is...
We vote.
So... How many say so?
All those in favor.
All those in favor, thank you. All those in favor. Okay, thank you. So, Diane, you assume the presidency of the Board of Education for the 2020-2021 school year. And calls for nominations for those of Vice President of the Board.
Wait, Whitney, don't I have to say the oath?
Huh?
Do I have to say the oath?
You can if you want to go now. You can if you have it.
I have it.
Okay, for you.
Okay. "I, Diane Sorensen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President according to the best of my ability."
So, I didn't write your name.
Oh, I should have... Not to you, huh?
No. And then you do the rest now, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a nomination for Vice President of the Board?
Mark?
Steve Jenkins, Vice President.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor of Steve Jenkins for Vice President? That's everyone?
"Bye, Steve Jenkins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President according to the best of my ability."
And everybody else, Megan, you'll need your signature. You're off to the office of any day.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, can I have a nomination for the position of Executive Duty Member for the 2020-21 school year for the Dutchess County School Board Association?
I nominate Mark Fleischer.
Second, second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Mark. That was everybody, Whitney, to get that. Okay.
That's all there, okay.
So, can I have a motion to appoint Whitney Drucker as Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2020-21 school year?
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Whitney, can you see everybody? Okay. That motion passes. A motion to appoint Christine Natale as School District Treasurer for the 2020-21 school year with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as Deputy School District Treasurer for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to appoint Susan McCormick as School Tax Collector for the 2020-21 school year at no additional stipend.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Michelle Keeler as Claims Auditor at the rate of $26.52 per hour for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint Tom Burdell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services as District Purchasing Agent, and Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to appoint Marvin Kreps as Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to appoint Emily Davison, Director of Special Services, as additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2020-21 school year with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint Emily Davison, Director of Special Services, as Section 504-88 Coordinator for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to appoint Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, as Designated Education Officer for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to appoint Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, as Age Coordinator for the 2020-21 school year at no extra stipend.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to designate Emily Davison, Director of Special Services, to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the Superintendent of Schools or practical and notification to the Board President or Vice President in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to approve the following additional appointments. Motion to appoint Teresa Kostakis, the BMS RHS School Nurse, and Mary Skeen, the CLS School Nurse, as Attendance Supervisor for the 2020-21 school year at no additional salary as included in the duties of School Nurse.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint the workplace at Mid Hudson Regional Hospital to provide school physician services and Dr. Rajiv Narula as Chief Medical Officer at the cost of $8,544 for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint Sheldon Teeter, Director of Facilities, as Asbestos Designated Chemical Hygiene Officer pursuant to OSHA and School Pesticide Representative for the School District for 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to appoint Whitney Drucker, Secretary to the Superintendent, as Records Access Officer; Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services as Records Management Officer; and Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools as Record Appeals Officer for the 2020-21 school year at no additional salary.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to designate Building Principal Edwin Davenport, John Chemnitzer, and Brett King as 2020-21 Dignity Act Coordinators for their respective schools as required by the Dignity for All Schools Act and by Section 5... Sorry about that. Section 4 of the Board of Education Policy 5300, Code of Conduct, to lead and coordinate the efforts of each school's Dignity for All Students Act team in proactively addressing and responding to any and all incidents of bullying, discrimination, hazing, and/or harassment as identified in this state law and Board policy.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to direct Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, to make payments of: A) monies for investments; B) interest on bonds as it becomes due; C) payments to redeem bonds as they become due; D) checks to cover payroll and agency account deposits; E) utility bills; F) expense payments to employees; and G) payments under contractual agreements.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to approve the following designations. Motion to designate M&amp;T Bank, NYLAF, Bank of Green County, and BNY Mellon as official depositories of funds for the School District for the 2000... Shouldn't this be 2021 as well?
Yeah, it's 20.
2021. 2020-21 school year. Other financial institutions will be brought to the Board in the course of the year for approval of investment services if necessary.
Same old.
Oh, sorry, wait, it didn't even be... Sorry about that. The motion to designate The Daily Freeman as the official district newspaper and The Poughkeepsie Journal designated as the alternate official newspaper for the district for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
All those in favor? Passes. Motion to approve the following authorizations. Motion to authorize Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, and Christine Natale, District Treasurer, to have access to the safe deposit box maintained by the School District at the M&amp;T Bank for the 2020-21 school year. The motion to authorize petty cash funds at the following locations in the following amounts for the 2020-21 school year. Business Office, $100. Secretary to Business Administrator. Tax Collection Office, $100. Tax Collector, Chancellor. Elementary School, $100. Elementary School Principal. Buckley Middle School, $100. Middle School Principal. Rhinebeck High School, $100. Middle School, High School Principal. Interschool Act, $50. Athletic Director. CLS Kitchen, $10. District Treasurer. BMS Kitchen, $60. District Treasurer. And RHS Kitchen, $100. District Treasurer. Uh, sorry. Motion to authorize Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, to approve transfers to budget codes up to $20,000 per transfer for the 2020-2021 school year. Motion to authorize Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, and/or Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as the Payroll Certification Officers for the 2020-21 school year. Motion to authorize Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, to approve or disprove all conference requests for the 2020-21 school year. Motion to authorize Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, to apply for grants and aid for the School District for state, federal, foundation, and private sources for the 2020-21 school year. And motion to delegate at the Board of Education's authority pursuant to Commissioner's Regulation 100.2Y to Albert Cousins, Superintendent of Schools, to have full and final authority to make determinations regarding student residency.
Same old.
All those in favor? Passes. Motion to re-adopt our previous Board policies and the Code of Ethics.
Same old.
Seth Jenkins.
All those in favor? Motion to approve that the meetings of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at 7:00 PM in the high school and middle school library for the 2020-21 school year or in an alternate location and/or times as noted on the agenda.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to adopt the per-mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which is currently .575 cents for approved use of personal vehicles on school business subject to change of the Internal Revenue reimbursement rate.
Same old.
All those in favor? And motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021, the Rhinebeck Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee for $101.70 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week will receive a salary of $30,000 or less except for per diem substitutes. The district will reimburse per diem substitutes for this expense after the completion of 10 days of work and the submission of proof of payment documentation. The district will pay this fee in advance for all others as outlined above.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to accept the list of New York State Certified and Partial Hearing Officers for Dutchess County for the 2020-21 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.311 of the Commissioner's Regulations for the purpose of conducting special education and partial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with Board policies.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Motion to appoint Shaw Furelson, May and Lambert, L.L.P., Attorneys at Law, as School Attorneys for the 2020-21 school year at a retainer fee of $36,000 and such attorneys assigned as investigator for Title VII, Title IX, and other matters for the 2020-21 school year if and as needed.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to approve all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded. Example Deputy Treasurer, Central Treasurer, Activity Fund, Claims Auditor, Deputy Claims Auditor, Purchasing Agent. The amount of $100,000 for employee per occurrence, or $1 million per occurrence for the Tax Collector, and $1 million per occurrence for the Treasurer for the 2020-21 school year.
Same old.
All those in favor? And motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as trustee, and Christine Natale, as School District Treasurer, as alternative trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess County Workers' Compensation Cooperative effective July 1st, 2020, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
Same old.
All those in favor? Motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Burnell, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as trustee, and Christine Natale, Superintendent of School District Treasurer, as alternative trustee representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium effective July 1st, 2020, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
Same old.
All those in favor? And that's... That's it. All right. So that closes our reorganizational meeting. And then we're going to move into our regular Board of Education meeting. And I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2020, regular meeting.
Same old.
Any additions or corrections? All those in favor? That's six in favor and one abstained.
Abstained.
And one abstained. Okay, we have an opportunity for public comment. And we don't see any public comment. Okay, we're going to move to reports and discussions. But today, Albert, it's your seventh official day as superintendent. We want to... We're excited you're here. It was nine months ago that the Board started the process to find a new superintendent. We're excited that you're here. A little welcoming gift for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I open it now?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, so thank you. I think it's actually my fourth official day, but I've been, you know, working nonstop 24 hours a day around this. First, I wanted to just congratulate particularly the high school on graduation. I did get... I was able to watch that livestream. And I really wanted to commend Dr. Davenport. I know as a high school principal that was a big effort to pull off and to make this special for the kids. So I wanted to congratulate the class of 2020 and commend Dr. Davenport for leading that work to make it a special day for the students. So I've been immediately at work with plans for returning safely to school. The highlight so far has actually been the tour of the facilities. Sheldon Teeter took me around to the building. And, you know, as I did that, I was looking out for some of those decisions we need to make about how students flow within the buildings and all that. So it was really good to kind of get my eyes on the classrooms with him. We've also... I've also had a meeting both with the State Association of Superintendents, listening to some of the best practices that they have.
Can you hear me talk?
Sorry.
Um...
Yes, yes.
Can you come back there and prop off the sound coming in there? I'm taking it in and out. I'm not hearing you well from here.
Is it better now?
Much better.
Okay.
Much better.
All right.
Give a sign if it's not.
So I had a meeting with the State Superintendent's group. There was about a reopening. And, you know, we are still waiting for more guidance from the state. That is the biggest factor. That is anticipated there same as early as this week, but ideally by the 13th, which is next week. And then earlier today, Dr. Rui from Dutchess Coast came. But Dutchess Coast has came to visit me for a welcome. But there are weekly meetings. So tomorrow is the first of many weekly meetings for all of the 13 district superintendents. The goal is for people to really be on the same page. I think it's really critical, as we do, to share in some of the best thinking. I am in contact with some of the other superintendents in the area. And we have a lot of thinking, a lot of great questions on there. And we're really going to have to plan for a couple of scenarios because there will always be unknown. I think our most important step will be able to be nimble and to be able to kind of pivot, you know, as things change and evolve. Because if we've learned anything, we've learned that change is a part of all of our planning. My vision for this work is going to be to organize it with very specific areas of focus so that people can be kind of concentrated in that area, whether it's the operational side, the instructional side, the mental health component. And we will be involving community stakeholders and the student voice as well. I did get to finally see the survey data. And I want to say that the community did an excellent job of responding to that. We had a really good response from both from students, from families, and from staff. So we have some data about what worked well, what additional supports were needed as a result of that. So, you know, I want to thank the Board for making that survey happen because we have something to work with in terms of the people. And I want to just thank the community for sharing that insight because that's going to inform a lot of the decisions. Because as much as we're going to be on the same page with the county, with the other schools, there are always going to be unique characteristics of our campus, of our community. And so that's going to be really valuable data as we go forward. And the only other thing I wanted to add is I think that we're going to have all these immediate concerns, but I still think there are broader areas that we will continue to work on. And we want to not lose sight of that. You know, I think there's definitely some opportunities for us to look at our work around issues of exiting and things like that. So all of that important work will continue to occur while we're dealing with the immediate need to get our schools open, when safe and in the appropriate ways. I'm really excited about the challenges, you know. This is such an interesting way to enter into a new system. I'm really excited by that. The work excites me. And I'm just looking forward to partnering with the community, with faculty, with the Board in doing the best possible stuff. So I'm really happy to be here. That is my report.
Thank you so much. So this will be a regular part of our Board meetings?
Yes.
Have a report, so that'll be nice. Anybody have any questions or anything they want to say? After that, any Board members? Jacqueline?
Do we have access to a one-on-one, you know, you're really... More detail, I suppose, okay?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that. I'm actually going to... I will put on the next agenda a synthesis of that data. And I will share with you both the key highlights, some analysis. And I'll actually provide to you all of the data that came in. I'll prepare that for the Board. And I will do a presentation at the next meeting just so people can see. I think it's very important for people to see that their responses were heard and to see themselves in the data. Because I think as we continue to do all work, we're going to want to survey the community. So I will present that on the next agenda as a report item. And I'll share that with the full Board as well.
Anybody else? So we'll move right into 2020-21 Board Goal Development Process. So we're going to follow the same process in your packets. You have the last couple of years of our Board Goals. We have our workshop coming up on the 23rd at 5:00. What we've done in the past is we've started sending out ideas through email ahead of time just to... Whether they're a complete thought of a goal or just kind of like a topic that you think is important. So I'll send something out this week so we can get started on that that will help speed up the process when we get to the workshop. So we already have some things in our mind that we want to look for.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
One thing I think... I did a little bit of an analysis of the goals. I actually dug back a little bit deeper. And what I would love for us to do is to think somewhat outside of the box in terms of where those goal areas have been and incorporating some more of the measures. How will we measure the success of those? So I'm really looking forward to that. I think when you really analyze it over time, I think when you really analyze it over time, you're going to see some, you know, trends that have occurred, and some of that's just the nature of the work that we do as a school system, so I would encourage you to really engage in that goal-setting process and think outside the box, because the more brainstorming we have, the more we're going to come to a resolution, not something that we think will really be a target.
And I would say if there's any data that you want or any information you want when we're thinking about goals, to send that to Albert ahead of time, if there's something you want to see. So we'll move on to good news. Anybody have any good news? Well, I mean, Albert already touched on graduation, so I just want to say again what a great evening it was for our students and a tremendous amount of hard work from Dr. Davenport and his staff, local fire department, the fairground, a lot of people involved in that, and it came together for the kids, and it was a really nice night. And also, right before that, we had the high school awards and recognition. There was a lot of high school students that were recognized and generous support from our community and giving some of these scholarships, and I just want to make sure I mention about that, that we're very fortunate in all the scholarships and things that our community give to our students, so a lot of hard work was put into earning those. Anybody else? Okay. Any old business? I guess this is old business, so we originally were thinking about doing that training that we didn't get scheduled, but Ms. Booth is offering us... Ms. Booth, the self-survey that you sent me? The self-survey that you sent me? Who are they doing that with? Do you remember? Alright, that's real. We have access to a self, a survey board self-survey that we could do that they're making available online, so I was thinking maybe even though we're not going to have that training, we could get a good opportunity to do that. So unless anyone's like opposed to do the board self-survey, you know, I'll work on getting that out to you guys. Okay. And we have another opportunity for public comment?
I'm just wondering, I apologize if I didn't ask this, because I wasn't sure what you were, exactly, how deep you had into the beginning comments that you were making.
Albert. Albert, Albert. I mean, that is the biggest question. I think every single superintendent is waiting for that. There had been lots of dates that were being tossed out, like, there was a rumor out there that districts were going to have to have a plan by July 15th. That is not a true statement. I think the Board Association actually just sent that to everybody. We're expecting some guidance this week. The one thing that we were recommended was to look at some of the other state's guidance, so I have been, you know, immersed in the Connecticut reopening plan, because that's pretty much what they're advising, but we've heard not a word from State Ed on that, so I'll know a little bit more after tomorrow's meeting with the county superintendents, but we're all really in the same place pending, you know, this further guidance. But there are action steps that we're already taking, because regardless of what that guidance comes, there are things that we can do now and thinking that we're going to be needing to do now that were already started, and the administrative group here had actually done, you know, some of them prior to my arrival as well.
What's the best way to keep it clear?
One thing that I will, there will be seen, and it's going to be combined with getting to, because the one interesting thing is normally there would be a point of transition for us to get to know each other, but because we have this immediate, that's going to be tied together, so there will be basically building base times for people to interact with me, so there'll be some of that. As soon as we have some more concrete detail, that will be shared. My first communication to the committee is going to detail what the committees look like, because we will be looking for their participation on that, but that will be coming on a regular basis as soon as I'm able to have something that is with official information. But I would say if they have questions, you know, I'm all ears for that, but I will be hosting sessions with people. It will be virtual, so if they want to just have direct contact with me, they can do that as well. And then once the committees are established, they will have areas that they can go to directly based on whatever their question for, wherever they want to provide input. Each of the leaders of the committee work will be seeking, you know, some of the, what are those needs and concerns? We did collect a lot of data from that survey, so that's going to also be pocketed by the committee.
Any other? Can I, I'll move into action items. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the following consent items.
Similar.
All those in favor? That motion passes. And then can I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of, for the purpose of...
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation.
Similar.
All those in favor? Okay, we're going to move into executive session. Thank you, everybody.